So June 18th, welcome everyone. It is the tail end of the year. We celebrated our middle school graduation. Geez, yesterday, wow, yesterday morning and we're gearing up for the high school graduation next Thursday. June 18th, welcome everyone. And that graduation ceremony is taking place on Thursday after Regents exams over the coming several days. So a lot going on. We're going to talk about all that stuff today, a lot to share with you. We've done a lot of the good work in our committee meetings over the past week. So tonight's a share out of that compilation of collective work. I've got two items to bring to you today in featuring our mission moment. The first is round tables and a couple of highlights there that are a little different than maybe what I brought to you before, but I think are exciting. And then our college now program and some of the ways in which our kids have taken advantage of it. So first and foremost, we had round tables over the course of four days last week. For those who have been to them before, you know what they entail. Sal was there and taking part, Ram was there and taking part. But this is roughly an hour long presentation of kids sharing out just some big reflections over the course of the year, what they've learned, where they've shown strength, where they've shown improvement. Before digging into a few artifacts that represent their learning in chosen content areas. For some kids, a great many of our kids, they're able to opt for kind of an honors pathway there where they're demonstrating a few kind of more rigorous skills within the content areas they choose. And so it was just a delightful affair. Parents are there, supporters are there, teacher staff obviously there. And so here you have one of our eighth graders who's our stellar presenter and has had lots of practice over his three years at Unity Middle with his mother who's quite happy he earned honor status. And so just a really great way to end the year. And again, we've been doing this 12 years now. We had supporters in the house and we had about 35, I think, over the course of the four days. I want to say maybe a half dozen of those were alumni of the school who came back and just were able to take part and walk down memory lane and think about themselves as presenters back in middle school, as well as folks who are very much in the mix like you all. Some people who have tutored before, some people who have given to the school before. And so overall, a good diversity of partners and supporters at the school. On the screen, you've got two notes coming from two people that took part in presentations as just volunteer audience members. And so I'll read them to you. The first comes from someone who is on our UAC, who's done some work with us technology wise over the course of the year in her spare time. And she says, "Thank you for including me in the presentation. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be a part of the experience. I've been riding high from it all week." Love that. And she says, "The pleasure is mine. I say that as I sit here typing on my Unity Prep t-shirt," she's got some gear, "I look forward to continuing with our work together soon." So that's supporter number one. Another supporter who in the past has tutored at our middle school and works in the tech field. She says, "Thank you for always extending an invitation to community members like myself. I always leave feeling so hopeful and inspired by Unity students." So I think while folks come in and they're very generous with their time, they take something away that I think makes them feel really good and skipping out of the building and inspired for the remainder of the week. So just, I love that feedback. So that's round tables. Second mission moment to highlight for today. We had about 10 students at our high school who participated in College Now. It's a program throughout the city where kids are able to enroll with some criteria at a local college and take a course of their choosing through a whole host of options. And we had, I want to say nine or so students earn credit toward college while in high school and enrolling in those courses. These are the kids that had school during the day. In the evenings, they took part in in-person college courses alongside other college students. Did fairly well, got credit, it's in their pocket, they're now going to college with it. So some good stuff there too, and thinking about just exposure, confidence, transitioning to college. And you know, I think from a practical level, some credits under their belt, they can now move on and take more advanced courses. And they're not paying for this. So all kinds of good things here. So want to expand this out and have more kids taking part in it as well as maybe some other partnering programs like this. And so yeah, really exciting stuff for kids. And so with that, we move into today's agenda. As you all know, for those folks who have been around the block, June is a busy month with regard to approval items, hence the really small font on your screen. We probably have about 10 items to approve today. A lot of them budget related and then some of them governance related and just thinking about the coming year and how we set things off right. So beyond that, some of the same flow you've seen in past meetings, we're going to move into headlines now. And I'll start with the academic centered stuff. I mentioned round tables happening already. We had, you know, 99% of our families in the building last week engaged watching their kids present out. And so really proud family members in the mix. You see a mother and her eighth grade son on the right, a really happy post presentation outside our building. Expand that out by about 250 kids and that was the experience. In addition to that, as I mentioned, we've got high school Regents going on this week. I think we had Algebra I take part, take place today, both at our middle school and our high school. As y'all know, our eighth graders take Algebra I or have the opportunity to take that too. So that went on, got to see kids in action there. And I think early notifications is things we're looking quite strong at the middle school for that class. We're planning now for Summer Academy. The middle school, we're looking at maybe 50 to 60 kids, including rising sixth graders, kids in fifth grade now coming to our school next year. We have not done that before and offering both some courses in math and ELA over the course of July for kids coming to our school, as well as some enrichment, some fun stuff in the afternoon happening too. So that's middle school. The high school numbers right now are about 40 kids taking part in Summer Academy over the course of July, grades nine and 11. We are right now actively supporting a select few kids who are on the cusp of graduating either in June or August. And so those intensive supports are happening now. I'll say a bit more about that later on as we dig into student learning committee updates. And then the work in transitioning kids to college and introducing kids to our alumni success counselors is underway with graduation happening next week. So those are some big headlines with academics at both sites. We move into culture and climate. On the right are some of our high school basketball team members at our spring awards banquet showing off their medals and plaques and things. Fun event, love these guys. And they're all juniors and coming back for more next year, so I love that too. With graduation ceremonies happening, I guess I mentioned that already. So yesterday and then next Thursday, next Thursday's graduation is in Manhattan on 14th Street. Invite a go out on Friday, just a casual one to supporters in case they're able to make it. You guys obviously are certainly welcome to also attend. End of year trips happening across the city, happening at Unity too. So lots of kids doing things at water parks and parks and amusement parks and having some fun as they close out the year. We have a bridge program that we're now planning for, for our rising ninth graders, both kids in our eighth grade going into our high school or kids from other schools in the eighth grade coming to our high school. That's a three day event in late July, so the planning for that is happening. This is a first time event for us. And we have, yeah, in terms of like staff and team, all sorts of end of year festivities going on. We've got five and 10 year work anniversaries for a good number of people. Staff promotions being celebrated and some send offs happening as people transition out. So this is what happens in June in a school. Finally, we move on to org health and we're building and planning for next year as we close out this year. So we've got enrollment initiatives fully in place. We still have seats open in the sixth and ninth grade. We are doing some work right now in consulting with a digital marketing group, which we haven't done before. I feel like that will help our profile, so that's happening now and very grateful to their work thus far. Let's see, some of the support work of teachers who are in need of gaining that certification happening actively. We've got our budget, which we're going to bring to you in draft form tonight for approval. Hiring is happening, we're in a pretty good place. We've got one opening at the middle school. We certainly have one candidate in an operations position. And then we've actively been interviewing for a math teaching position, a science teaching position, a PE teacher position and arts teacher. And I believe we've got offers out in PE and perhaps one of the math positions. Beyond that, strategic planning, we've been working through a three year plan with the board over the past couple of months that's happening at the site level for the single year too. I got to participate in two multi-hour sessions at the middle school yesterday and today with Ariel, our principal at the middle school at the helm. And so those feel really good. Strong, strong middle school team coming back next year from a school leadership standpoint. This work will continue with the high schools as we finish up exams next week. Fundraising planning for 25, 26, beginning to think ahead about just building and continuing to gain momentum there. We've got August preparation, scheduling kind of being created. And then we've got renovations happening at both our buildings. So middle school is closed for a full renovation. We're using DOE space down the street to house Summer Academy and enrichment in the afternoon. At our high school, it's just the gym that's being renovated, so we're using other parts of the building for Summer Academy. But it's just, it requires some work and some planning and some oversight. And so this is, this is the work we're involved in now moving into July and August. On the right, we had an award ceremony for our middle school for semester two on Wednesday of last week. And so one of our students posing with her honor roll certificate on the right. And with that, if there are no questions about headlines in these three areas, I'm going to move into some data share. Cool. So in looking at the dashboard this week, in comparison to last month, not a whole lot of change in going from mid-May to mid-June with regard to these measures. I think one right now at the middle school in looking at just suspensions and disciplinary data there. We were on watch, I was looking at just sort of where we were last month as there was a bit of an uptick in the spring. And this month with school closing out, we met our target. And so feel good about that, looking always to improve and think about ways of supporting kids before. Things with disciplinary issues arise and teaching them. So that's the one change from the past month, so not much to report there. The next slide provides some of the data, I'll make this a bit bigger. But what I want to do is I want to zoom into a couple of areas here that I want to see improvement in the coming year and some of the ways in which we're going to do so. So some of these areas have been in pink for multiple months or a good portion of the year. Enrollment being one, recruitment being another and development and suspensions being a fourth area at the high school. So I want to dig into those now. And so what I've done is you've seen this slide before where I've shared out current actions for items that we're either on watch with or currently not meeting. We're now at the end of the school year, so I'm focusing on four areas of school where we are not currently meeting and we're looking forward now to next year in making corrections so that we're in a good place in each of these areas. So I'll share that out if people have questions or a take on this. Some of this dialogue happened during the committee meetings, but please, please share if there's insights to be conveyed. So the first area is with recruitment and enrollment and a couple of things that we will actively be working toward this summer into the new year is first revising our student recruitment calendar so that it's more balanced over the course of the year and we're doing more work on the front end with things like reaching out to feeder schools, making connections with them and being at those schools. That's one. Second would be expanding our staff participation in recruitment. And so having there be an expectation that every staff member at the school takes part in some form of recruitment over the course of the year and signs up for that. That just adds to the buy-in, adds to the volume of people being able to support the efforts, et cetera. We have not done that before and other schools have done that, so it's good practice. I talked about digital marketing a moment ago and so increasing that. And so we're working with a group over the next three months to see that through. If that goes well, we will continue in using them. But I expect and anticipate the learning curve to increase over the course of this experience with this firm. We're pretty light in this area right now and so looking to scale up. And then fourth here would be expanding our feeder school participation. So having more partnerships with feeder schools. I've had some good discussions recently about how to do that with a few additional neighboring schools. And so we found really great outcomes with regard to our strong relationships with the handful of schools that we do have partnerships with and having them send kids to our school proudly and us receive them proudly each year. And so want to increase that so that we've got good relationships, familiarity across sites, a trust, a bond. And so that would be another priority for the year. And then finally, just generally increasing our profile and branding. Some of that just related to visuals of outside the building, making folks know that our school is there and making it buzz as people walk by, things like that. So that's recruitment and enrollment. Moving on to herbing OSS at the high school. We have had a lot of events outside the building beyond the school day take place that have unfortunately resulted in suspensions being had. I think for us, one would be just clarifying our interventions when there's conflict in ways where there are alternatives to suspension and being clear about that among staff. I think there has been times in which clarity, greater clarity here could prevent kids from being outside the building and so want to maximize that as much as we can. And then beyond that, just increasing club programming and participation athletics. And we carved that out of the budget to make that happen. And so I'm excited to have kids doing things after school, taking pride, feeling ownership, feeling connected with others. And that resulting in kids having great things to do after school and not perhaps being bored. Third, with development, a couple of things on the radar for the coming year as we build out our machinery infrastructure. One would be just first maintaining our existing donor base. And so that stewardship, we've had some people come in this year who have been very generous to us. And so us just honoring that and keeping a connection and excitement going. Beyond that, increasing our cultivation efforts through referrals. And that would happen with folks like you here as well as our staff in meeting with others who might be interested in being a part of our school actively, either through their talents, their means, et cetera. I want to pause right there for one second because Trudy Sandy is joining us. I want to say hello to Trudy.
Hi there, hi, hello. Pretty good.
Congratulations on Ade's graduation.
Thank you, thank you. We pushed him over the finish line.
We were just there in case he needed us, but he did it.
Yeah, he did it, very proud. And also my nephew Malachi, he graduated yesterday.
I gave him, I got a great picture, I'll send it to you and got a big hug with mom. And so yeah, they're really pleased too and it was a wonderful ceremony, so.
Yes, thank you to Unity for so much, you know, so much that you guys have done for myself and my family.
You've been great to us and you've been an awesome ambassador, friend of the program, parent, board member, mentor. And so I'm glad you're here tonight. I know you're super busy these days, but I'm glad you were able to kind of join us and.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you guys. Hi there.
Hey, am I making this up or have you been in school too or were you recently?
Yeah, I'm in school. Actually, I just transferred from Baruch and now I'm going to Rutgers in New Brunswick. Because I moved to Jersey, I moved to New Jersey. My daughter and my son-in-law, because my daughter got married and my daughter and son-in-law, and now they, they're living in my home. So I just moved to a quiet little town in New Jersey. And I'm in school as well and still working at both jobs.
Yeah. Stay busy.
But you know, the hardest, the hardest part was being a parent and I feel like, you know, they had, they had a great foundation with Unity and you know, it's, I keep telling him to, there's a huge network there to just reach back. I understand that they're trying to find their way, you know, and I say they, I'm talking about, you know, Ishana Mathias and so many of his other friends, you know, they're trying to find their way, but they also, all of them know that Unity is there for them.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely. You know, whether it's college career, you know, Eric is still very much in the mix. Naseeb is still very much in the mix, Jada, so like from alumni success perspective, they're there. Obviously, we're all here too.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm trying to get dinner with a few of the recent graduates next week, so I want to get in the mix too. And so probably next Thursday, but I'll reach out.
That sounds good. Thank you, thank you guys, thank you for your patience. I know at the last year, this last year, it's been kind of tight for me because I've been working and trying to establish my own, trying to grow up myself to try to establish my own footing. And you know, I knew that it just wasn't fair for me to just have a place mark on, on the board. I just needed to just step down and give it to someone who can be able to assist and help as well. So thank you guys for understanding.
Yeah, no, thank you again, your perspective, your ideas, your experiences have been like powerful for our board and the school. And so, so I can't, can't thank you enough.
Well, you have my number, so anytime.
I do, and I text you often, so.
Yeah, anytime you need me to pop in, you know, this is my, I'm just doing summer classes, so this is my last semester. And once I'm finished here, you know, I'm, I'm pretty free, I'm just going to be in New Jersey. So just pop in if it fits my schedule, text, send me a, shoot me a text and I'll be more than happy to come and you know, talk to parents if I can, if anywhere I can be of help.
That'd be terrific, terrific, okay. Well, thank you for, thank you for checking in tonight.
Yes.
Give Ade my best and give him a heads up.
Definitely will, I definitely will, you guys take care of yourselves.
Thanks, Trudy.
Take care.
All right. So that was awesome and so I think we were talking about development a little bit. And so I think in addition to getting my footing here, in addition to referral efforts, I think just within the calendar, making more opportunities for donors to take part in events is something else on my mind. And just again, building out some things we did this year in their early form and creating more buzz and excitement to expand the base. Beyond that, and thinking about high school interim assessments and looking to make consistent improvements there. There are a couple of big things that we will be doing moving into the coming year. I've already started planning here. So one is just reaffirming up our instructional coaching model at the high school, which I think has been more inconsistent than I'd like for it to be this year. Beyond that, just improving our data responsiveness and expanding our tutoring. So getting like really good data in the hands of the right people to then make good decisions for working with the students who benefit from it most and helping to address misconceptions they had. They're set up for success and tutoring being a component of that after school and on the weekends, which we refired up this spring with Algebra I. Finally, just increasing instructional time. So we are doing some things with the calendar. We are going to be adjusting minutes of instruction by period, by a few, by about five to 10 minutes, no, five minutes per period, which may not seem like a lot, but over the course of the year can add up. And I think we're doing some things with regard to when class periods take place and when advisory take place that are just most ideal in experiencing the most for our kids over the course of the day. So a few changes with regard to the calendar or the schedule over the course of the week. So collectively, those are some things that are high leverage, in my opinion, not exhaustive. There are other things we're obviously doing too, but wanted to, to convey some of the things we're thinking about to improve on these areas that require attention. Are there any questions or comments here? Cool, and I didn't mention this earlier, Melissa is unable to be here tonight, but did some of the lifting on the prep front, including work with the SLC last week. So let me move forward now to our committee report outs for tonight. We'll start with student learning, move into AFC and then development and then governance. As I said, each of the committee meetings over the course of the past week were productive or active. And so here we go. So with the SLC, here was the agenda from last week's committee call. What's in green are things that we're going to discuss tonight or have already discussed since you're getting a summary of these things. And so we've talked about some of the headlines academically that were also discussed in greater length with the SLC. Beyond that, I'm going to share out just a quick update on graduation support and forecasting as of June for the class of 2025. And then I'll provide a quick summary on just some of the strategic planning we did with a focus on high school improvements for the coming year with the committee. So first, just graduation wise, not a huge change. I think we reported out an update two months ago, bringing things back. Our four-year graduation forecast for the class of 2025 as of August, which is how our authorizer measures graduation, will be somewhere between 87 and 94%, depending on our supportive students and success in doing so over the course of the coming week and over the summer in a few cases. So the table provides just numbers, we're talking about 62 kids in the class of 2025, a vast majority being in great shape and off to college next year. A select few working through some things academically to earn that bar. And so a lot of the work is very customized here. There may be issues with attendance and making sure that that's consistent. And then based on that, kids showing the sorts of skills they need to, to demonstrate they're ready for earning that course credit. And so that happening now with a select number of kids individually and one-on-one daily tutoring. Some of that being things that carry over in the summer with kids taking a course or perhaps two during the month of July. And then perhaps and hopefully being successful with graduation in August. And so that's where we are right now. The goal each year is 93%. The state level is typically in the mid 80s with four-year graduation rates. So we are north of the state average, but somewhere in the mix of where we want to be. And so aiming to support all these kids. And that's, that's the update on the graduation front for the class of 2025. Beyond that, we talked about as a committee wanting to focus in a few areas of high school improvement. Got into a fairly wholesome, productive conversation there where essentially we're looking at a number of areas of the school that we want to show improvement in or show improvement through a number of areas, I should say. And so over the course of this summer and this spring, moving in next year, we are making some changes with staffing and some of the restructuring. We're also rejiggering the way in which we're managing performance and development. I mentioned that earlier with instructional coaching. There are some academic supports that we're going to be either restructuring or increasing. Thinking about ways in which we increase and enhance and advance pride in the school. And kids coming to school each and every day at their best. We're thinking about the way in which we're using time, the way in which we're using space. And then the way in which we're getting kids excited around academic enrichment beyond the building. So SLC had a good conversation about this. To give you just a bit of a narrower view with staffing, a few things are happening or have happened already moving into next year. We do have a new principal coming in next year. It's our AP of Teaching and Learning, and so she comes with a deep instructional focus. We do have a new Senior Director of Support Services coming to the school. This person is a seasoned leader in a nearby charter network. And Melissa's worked with this person in the past and knows them quite well. So excited to work with this individual. We do have chair positions at the school where there will be active coaching coming from each of these folks. We'll have a chair in the humanities and a chair in STEM. And so more of an instructional coaching focus than what we had this past year with chairs across all content areas. And so I think this is good for the development of team and good for just skill growth. And then finally, we are adding one dean of students. This is a veteran teacher, a male educator. Right now, we have two deans at the high school, both are female. And so I feel like this rounds out our team and allows for connection across all of the students we serve. So those are things happening staffing wise. And then what we did as the committee level is focused in on a few areas, including performance development and some of the ways in which we are looking to improve in that, some of the support. performance development and some of the ways in which we are looking to improve in that, some of the supports we have in play and then culture. And I referred to each of these a moment ago when talking about our data dashboard. So I won't go into depth there. Um, and that was the gist of Thursday's meeting with the SLC. Beyond that, a big agenda, uh, during Friday's audit and finance committee meeting, um, all the areas in green are areas we're going to discuss tonight. A majority of them up for approval. Um, I'm going to hand things off to Kristin now to provide a brief update on May twenty twenty-five as we close out this fiscal year. And so if you've got screen sharing access, Kristin, I'll let you do that.
Okay. All right. So for May, um, this is a, a busy month and a, an important month as we don't meet again before fiscal year actually closes out. So these projections are quite important as we're looking at year end and how we're going to, to fare against NICE Ed's benchmarks and the bond covenant. So at this time, we're meeting all the benchmarks for NICE Ed um, and all of the benchmarks for our bonds, uh, which is good to see. We are.
Sure, I can see your screen. I'm not sure.
Okay.
You can? Misha? Wow, that's weird. Okay.
I already shared.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think it was just.
It might have been because you were presenting and I might have.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay. Um, and then as we're projecting for year end, so June thirtieth, um, we are projecting, um, a significant deficit, but that's just in relation to the rate of use entry, which we've talked about many times over the last few months. So when we pull that out for a real, real understanding of where we're ending the year, we are in a positive, we are projecting out to be about two hundred and seventy-three thousand at this point. Um, so we are projecting to still be at a positive position for this year. So we've done the necessary work, um, with the reduced revenues to, to reduce our expenditures at the same time. And then from a cash flow, which is one of the important metrics for June thirtieth is ensuring we have that sixty days cash on hand per NICE Ed's requirement. Um, we are projecting out to, to meet that at this time. Um, and, and we would need to distribute almost double what we've distributed any other month to, to not meet that sixty days. So at this point, we don't see a need for a loan from F O N B to Unity like we did last year, uh, which is good news. So, um, we still reserve to kind of monitor that over the next twelve days and see how that's going. But at this time, we should be in, in a good spot and not need that. So um, all in all, ending the year in a good position, um, considering all the financial challenges we've had. Um, so that's it for May. Um, and then do you want me to jump to the next one, Josh?
Uh, well, let's see here. I think for the other approval items here, each of them, we're going to be talking about when we get to approval items. So why don't we just hold tight on numbers two through seven? We'll come back to them. And then just the other brief update would be from a facilities front. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we are renovating our gym at the high school and the update for the board is that we have, um, uh, a handshake, uh, with a group called Quest that'll be doing the work. We've had some meetings. We're now finalizing a contract, which would be between F O N B and, um, the contractor. Um, and so looking forward to having them, um, do upgrade work to the gym over the course of the summer. And that work would be paid for through the funding we received when purchasing the building, um, two years ago. So exciting, uh, news there. And I'm eager to begin the work. It's been a while, uh, to get this kind of up and running and going. Right, Sal? Yeah. So, uh, we move into, uh, I'll move back to my screen now, Kristin. Thank you. Um, and we'll move into the next committee update, which would be uh, related to, come back to that. Uh, development committee, um, related stuff. And so we did not meet as a committee formally, but we did meet during roundtables last week, uh, with then plans to meet again, uh, next week. And so, um, Sal and Ram, thanks for again attending roundtables. I know you had a good time. You always do. Um, and, um, uh, right now, just to report out to full board where we are, we're closing out the fiscal year from a development perspective, uh, some gains made with regard to the way in which fundraising supplements our budget. We didn't meet on all of our goals this year fundraising wise, but we built some momentum and some structures and systems out so that we're, we're eager to get moving in twenty-five, twenty-six. So all is good there. This was a positive year with regard to efforts and the building of, um, our capacities. Uh, we're now in a stage of just like finalizing where things stand developmentally, uh, this year from a fundraising standpoint, so we can step back, analyze where we are and then plan forward. And, um, uh, I think the goal for us in the coming month is to, um, is to, uh, revisit where things were, reflect a bit and then, um, build out some, some targets and key actions, including a calendar for the coming year, which we'll bring to the full board in, in July. And so, um, Sal and Ram, I will send you a couple of possible dates for getting together next week, um, tomorrow. And that's where things stand, I think, from a development perspective coming out of, uh, the past month. And then finally, uh, governance committee stuff. So we spent our time on two general items. Um, first, uh, uh, want to bring the full board tonight that we did update a draft twenty-five, twenty-six governance action items calendar. And so, um, for folks who are newish to this process each year, um, we like to, to outline what it is from a governance, um, perspective, we should be focused on each month moving forward and then try to sort of stay within that to make sure we're covering our bases. And so I want to share that with the full board tonight. That would be an approval item. I'm going to do that now. Um, and then beyond that, uh, we also talked about the annual board self-assessment survey. Uh, we did that last spring. It's something we do annually. It's best practice. We usually get a few really good insights coming out of that. And so, um, so let me go there. Uh, it's a shorter survey. I can actually put it up on the screen for you so you can see it. Um, will take about five to 10 minutes to complete, asks folks about generally their impressions and experiences on the board, um, this year. And then those things that were really inspiring, those things that we can get better at, those areas that, um, we should focus on, et cetera. So short, brief, but important survey to fill out. Um, with that, it'll be sent to you on the nineteenth and you'll have until the thirtieth to complete it. We'll then look at summary, uh, responses in July and then begin action planning from there. Last year, some of the actions coming out of that were the formal development, I'm sorry, the formal establishing of a development committee as well as a governance committee. So those are two big groups for the board. And so, um, so let's see what, what comes about at this, um, this year. The board action items calendar looks something like this. For those folks who may not be familiar with it, essentially action items, um, going down the left column, uh, rough months where we may deviate by a month here or there, um, just given flow, given competing commitments, et cetera, but it gives us a general sequence. The domain of the school, uh, where those action items lie, the action items themselves, and then the owner, which are, which is now committee based. So each committee owns certain actions here, um, uh, roughly over the course of the year. And so moving into July, you'll see a couple of items come up. The discussion of the board of self-assessment, we just set that up now. So that'll be something we do in July. Um, we are making some updates. The employee handbook, that would be something we bring to the full board in July. So I have student learning committee here, but we won't be meeting as committees in July. It'll be the full boards. We'll bring that to you with some advanced notice. And then, um, the student family handbook, which will likely be happening in August and not July, but typically it's something we do in the summer. So those are the few items that are kind of coming down the pipeline. Um, beyond that, if you look at this, you'll see there are events related to, um, approving goals for the year, visits to the school happening in October. Um, I'm going to, I'll share this out to you guys as well to, on Friday, when we share out the, um, the survey. So you'll have that, um, for those who haven't seen this before, but, um, generally it provides some guidance on things, um, with regard to how we, over the course of the year, manage busy lives outside the board and within. Um, for folks who have been here or folks who are new, do you have questions or would you want to dive into this in specifics now? Or is a share out seem logical and then we can circle back to this in July if folks have clarified questions? Cool. I'm seeing a couple of nods. Let's do that then. So you have this, you'll have access to it on Friday. You have access to it now, but, um, I'll send it to you. So those were the two items coming out of the governance committee meeting on Wednesday of last week. Questions there?
No, the only thing I just wanted to ask, like, uh, I'm not sure if this has come up in middle school, high school in terms of trends and use of AI. Uh, but I know we're definitely considering like what is guidance related to student and staff use? So that could be something to consider in terms of the family and staff handbooks as well.
Yeah, I love that. Thank you. And, um, I, I, we, we've discussed this, but not in concrete terms or in having it embedded in our employee handbook and student family handbook. So that's, that's good stuff. Thank you.
Hey, Josh?
Yes.
I don't want to derail any part of your meeting, so maybe for a different discussion, but I'm just curious how the school is thinking about how students will, you know, use like chat GPT and equip themselves like on the positive side. Cause I feel like a lot of the school discussions are around like making sure like kids don't cheat, you know, kids like misuse it, but like obviously there's a lot of positives, like how can we help, um, think about equipping our students so that, for example, if you're like doing, like, as we talked about, like making a PowerPoint that like the spelling formatting is done and like GPT will check and help them like, I don't know, find matching pictures or something so that like they, they can focus on the actual work and not like the minutia. Uh, I'm just curious on how we can help at some point.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a, you know, Melissa's taken part in a number of, um, uh, sort of virtual sessions on best practices with AI and education in schools. And so she's sort of like our, our expert in house with regard to our, our movement forward. At this point in time, we don't have like a formal stance as a school on, um, uh, or direction on, on, on how um, we do things as a staff team or with students. So it's a gap. So it's got to be something we, we, we devise and provide some guidance on the coming year. So, um, uh, I think it's exciting and I, I do like what you've said about best practices and how to utilize it and not just having it be something that's seen as like it's cheating. You know, um, so, uh, I, I see it being a pretty powerful tool that we need to equip our kids, um, appropriately to, to also, um, employ and utilize. Um, so I think with that, we're going to move into, um, some agenda items. Um, I've been texting with Marion who should be here rather soon. So I'm going to move around a little bit until we efficiently have, um, quorum. Uh, and so I think what we ought to do now is she was, um, an active member of Friday's budget. Um, meeting, an AFC meeting. So maybe what we do now is I'll have Kristin provide some of the headlines with regard to budget. She'll then join us and then we'll go on to some of the other items.
Josh?
That require her attention. Yes.
I could be wrong, but I think, uh, I don't know, maybe we don't, we have Jim, Misha and Sal, but Trudy came off. So I think we're just under form. Okay.
Yeah, and, and Trudy officially resigned last month. So we're in a place right now, until Ram gets his paperwork in where we've got, um, an odd number of folks. And so we need more than half to be on uh, the quorum side of things. But I saw something come through today. So Ram, congratulations. We'll get that out.
Right, that's right. I've, yeah, I've got the paperwork done.
Yes, yes. Cheers to you. Uh, so, uh, with that, I'm going to move things back. Kristin, we can use my screen here. Um, I've got the deck that we, uh, had been working from. And so if you can see it, I can see it. We can move forward.
Yep.
All right.
Um, okay. So moving into twenty-five, twenty-six budget, um, we made a couple of changes since the last time we presented out. We did, um, take a look at where our enrollment currently is with the school and, and how recruitment's going. Um, so we did make the conservative move to, to budget for four seventy-five. Um, we were originally budgeting at five hundred. So we did, we did make that change. Uh, we also were notified of the final per pupil allocation, which was slightly lower than what we had been, um, budgeted preliminarily, um, from our communications from, from the Charter School Center. So that came down a little bit, not a lot, but that did come down a little bit. So those were two changes on the revenue side. Um, Josh, you can go to the next slide. And then, um, so, so as we're looking at the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, we are projecting a little over fifteen point three million dollars. Um, changes from last, last presentation, we did have a reduction of seven hundred and fifteen thousand due to that lower enrollment and lower per pupil. Um, we did adjust our interest income up a little bit. The feds have been holding the rates. In fact, they held again today. Um, and we are exceeding our current budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand by a pretty significant amount. So we felt comfortable raising that um, budget back up to where we are budgeted this year. Um, so that's where we're, we're looking at for next year, a little over fifteen point three million in revenues. On the expenditure side, uh, we are looking at sixteen point nine, a little over sixteen point nine million. Um, that is a significant difference, but you'll see when we get to the kind of two slides from now, um, that rate of use entry really plays a role in, in why that's so much higher. So we'll, we'll strip that out as we look at the, the bottom numbers. Um, Josh, if you can go to the next slide, some changes we did make to expenditures with the reduced enrollment, we, we, we took a look at our staffing and our benefits. Uh, we made some reductions there. We did pull down our budgetary reserve to twenty thousand instead of thirty thousand, which is in line with what we budgeted this year and did not use. Um, so we felt confident leaving that as is, um, and one small reduction to the administrative team's professional development line. So those were the changes in expenditure side. And then the next slide is the net. Josh, you want to?
Well, just with regard to, um, the staffing reduction, just know that like, given the timing of the year, there's some positions that we're just not going to fill. And so for example, in the sixth grade, we're going to go from four sections to three sections of students based on enrollment now. We could increase that if enrollment increases, but right now we felt confident doing that. And so there are no, um, layoffs, so to speak, with regard to staffing. These are open positions, um, that were either open voluntarily or we, we made decisions not perhaps to have someone back next year. And we're not then, um, filling those positions with new candidates, new teachers or staff, depending on the position.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Um, so then as we look at kind of where are we at, um, like I said, that rate of use entry really does kind of throw a wrench in there on our expenditure side. So when we pull that out, um, we do have a projected net income of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. When we look at it from a non-cash or from a cash perspective, we're in the positive about three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, so a little bit off the mark, but not far off. Um, we're going to continue to monitor our recruitment, um, and enrollment for next year. Um, and if we need to come back and look at it again, um, at the start of next school year, we'll, we'll do so. But this is the best guess and estimates we have at this time. I think still being pretty conservative with that four seventy-five. Um, so those are the changes we've made and, and what we're proposing for final approval. Uh, we do need to present this, um, to the trustee of the bonds for posting on the Emma, uh, portal, which is, um, available to all public and shareholders. So we are asking for the board's approval of the budget as it stands today of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars net income when we pull out that rate of use. Any questions? I'd be happy to take them.
So I think what I'll do now is as we, um, uh, uh, wait for Marion to jump on, I'm going to go back to approval items and I'm going to focus in on the areas where, um, we can provide some information for the full board that perhaps Marion was a part of that does need to then be re, um, described to her. And so why don't we move forward with tra- uh, transportation services and technology with Chris? So these are items that will be up for approval. They are items in our budget for the coming year or in closing out this year that are over twenty thousand dollars. And so per our bylaws, we are required to get, um, uh, at least three bids to the greatest extent that we can, um, as well as bringing these items to the board's approval. So Chris, I'll have you describe the first co- such costs which would relate to transportation.
Absolutely. Thanks, Josh. Uh, during spring two thousand twenty-four, so about a year ago now, um, our school bus vendor, ARJ Transportation, attempted to raise prices quite a bit. I don't remember the exact number. Um, but I reached, during that time, I reached out to every single Department of Ed's schoolless vendor, uh, via email and then some via phone calls as well. And learned that even with the June two thousand twenty-four significant price increase, uh, our current vendor at that time was still much cheaper than every other vendor I reached out to. Many of them said they weren't able to provide any additional private service buses. Again, these are buses that our middle school students use to get to school. Again, these are buses that our middle school students use to get to school safely. Our parents love the buses. We have two full-size yellow buses that run on different routes through South Brooklyn. Both of them are full of middle school students every day. They said for the twenty five, twenty six school year, they want to raise prices three point nine percent. Uh, so that would be six hundred and twenty-three dollars, forty cents per bus per day. I could reach out to every other vendor, but I imagine the other vendors also raise prices the same amount, if not more. So essentially seeking to continue with the same vendor, they've been great. Uh, so it would be six hundred and twenty-three dollars, forty cents per bus per day times two buses throughout the school year. Any questions?
Cool. So if no questions are there, we described it uh, for everyone who will be voting tonight. We'll now move into the second item. Uh, or not the second, but the next item on the agenda for approval, which would be technology services.
Oh, yes. Uh, so we have, we've been working with IYAs as a technology vendor uh, since before I joined Unity in two thousand and sixteen. They've been good to us. Um, they are affordable. During the similar story, uh, during June two thousand twenty four, they raised prices significantly, thirty-three percent from fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars per month for managed tech services. Everything from software services, uh, supporting teachers who are having issues repairing Chromebooks. Uh, they, with that five hundred dollar per month increase from fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars during summer two thousand twenty four. I reached out to other vendors to learn very similar story that they are very competitive. Uh, there was one vendor that came back cheaper, but overall it was, it would have been a different package and a different level of support. And I wasn't at all impressed with their communication during the research process. Uh, good news is that the price for our tech vendor is not going up at all. Uh, so essentially the old contract, the old contract at two thousand dollars per month renews into a new contract for twelve months at two thousand dollars per month. And I received written confirmation that this is already the case. So essentially, if I do nothing by June thirtieth, then old contract, same price rolls into the new contract for the twenty five, twenty six school year. But given the price, we do need board approval.
Any questions about tech? No question from team here. Let's move into the next item, just for information sharing, Chris. Digital marketing services. You probably could be a bit more brief with regard to the work um, in terms of like the, the background, but I think general headlines is fine. Go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. This is a new item. Um, so as Josh mentioned earlier in the meeting, we are seeking to develop a partnership uh, with a social media marketing group called Mango. If you've looked at a bus or you've watched Amazon Prime or you watched a YouTube video over the neck last few months, you may have seen an ad from Success Academy or Uncommon or KIP or Achievement First. Um, so other schools are spending a lot more on social media. We need to up our game a bit here. Uh, so I'm seeking twenty-seven thousand dollars directly from Mango for their creation of ads and monitoring of ads from June through September. Plus fifteen hundred dollars for June website updates with their web developer. Plus uh, fifteen thousand dollars for actual ads. That's, that's, that's what's going directly to Meta through them. Uh, for the ads themselves, Mango does not add a commission on the ads. So the total cost for uh, relationship with them from June through September would be forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. But again, split up among those different avenues. Given the cost, I did reach out to another vendor and I actually met with them earlier today. But I wasn't as impressed with them on the call. They're working with our neighbor schools, whereas Mango's not. And they are also they're not able to start until July, but I would want somewhere to start now or end of July.
Wow. What do you think, Sal?
I, I don't have context, so it just sounds like a large number.
The way Marion described it is think of it, it's around three, three to four kids. So at the end of the day, if they bring us four, five, six kids, it was a, it, it's a worthy investment.
And I think beyond, beyond it, then getting outreach in a way that we haven't done and then maybe um, uh, connecting with some families that want to attend our school more so than what we have now in place structurally. Uh, I think it, it, there's a, again, a good learning curve here where we're gonna gain some insights about how they do things and best practices that we may not have full sighting on now. So for example, we had a good discussion today with this group on just like the ins and outs of like really stellar, flawless photos for social media. Um, and you know, there, there's just some things to learn about how you do that well, so that um, it, it appeals to uh, those admiring them. And so that's just one of many ways in which I think we'll probably skill up with regard to this work.
Is there crossover with the other work we're doing for the sort of? I don't know.
Website?
Site and all this other kind of stuff.
Yeah, there is. So they've, um, they've offered some take on website stuff, but like the good news there is that we've got some uh, pro bono support there happening with the UAC member and others. And so they've taken like our, our homepage is now um uh, updated um, at the school and right now, uh, Mango's gonna focus strictly on the landing page for applicants, which would be our applicant page. And so um, I think that makes sense in terms of how we divide up focus and labor. So um, those are uh, just some background on items that we will be voting on soon. I'm gonna move on to the next, which is uh, our um why don't we move next to the audit, audit engagement? And I guess Kristen, I'll let you take that for twenty-four, twenty-five?
Thank you. Um, so we have received our audit engagement letter um, from the auditors. I'm sorry, I've closed accidentally closed the tab that was on. Uh, I believe it's thirty-three, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, I am trying to negotiate with them because it is a bit higher than what the increase is for the per pupil. So I'm trying to get them back in line with that. So I think for tonight, we'll do um, an approval for up to the thirty-eight thousand, five hundred, which is the current um, version of the engagement letter I have on, on file. Uh, but we won't sign it until I finish those negotiations and try to get it down a little bit more. But uh, we do need the board's approval so we can sign the engagement letter and they can formally officially start the audit. We've already started working on it, but officially we'll have them uh, sign off on the audit. Um, so we do need that approved by the board.
Cool. Um, and then beyond that, I'll move now to the board meeting schedule for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, and so here's, here's what it looks like here. We've got full board meetings happening um on select Wednesdays of each month uh, from July on through June. Um, and I've tried to space them out in accordance with breaks we have. Um, and so if, for example, when we have our break in February, there's not a lot of whole, there's not a whole lot of time that transpires between the January and March meeting with regard to school days. And so in those cases, I've deviated which Wednesday of the month the meeting is happening. Um, so again, this represents just um being able to get the board's scarce time at the most important times each month over the course of the year. That's the, the rationale. Beyond that, we've got some Zoom meetings happening virtually as we're doing tonight. There's also some in-person meetings here. And so those in-person meetings would be in October, in January and in May. Last year, you may recall, we tried to do things in December. That's a no-no. December's tough on people. So we'll do it in January instead when it's just cold. Um, so those are board meetings happening same time, Wednesdays at six. And then um, it should be with three. And then beyond that, committee meetings, uh, right now, the proposal is just to keep them at the same times over the course of the week prior to each board meeting. So if we're cool with this, Chris will begin sending out invites for the year um, based on this schedule. But the developing committee meetings would happen at six PM on Mondays in the week prior to our board meeting. Governance Committee on Wednesdays at four thirty. Student Learning Committee Thursdays at four thirty and then Audit and Finance on Fridays at two thirty. As it's been, I think, since we opened. That's been a pretty consistent meeting. Um, so with that, are there any proposals, questions? For how this looks now? Cool. So again, the next step, given that um, is that Chris would get these out in calendars so that um, they're secured. All right, moving on. Uh, next up would be the Governance Action Calendar. We talked about that already. Uh, and so um uh, that's just something we formally improve, approve each year, just so that we're uh, we're, we're, we're keeping it on our radar. And so um, that's here. Uh, I also want to bring to the board tonight, just the appointment of officers to the board trustees. Um, we don't have to vote on this today. If folks want to give this a month's time or month's look. But here's what things look like right now with regard to officers. So Jim continuing in the chair role. Lenny uh, continuing the vice chair role, Marion as the treasurer. And then there is an opening for secretary. Um, what we officially Trudy had been in that role. She's now uh, transitioned off the board. And informally, uh, Jeanette's been doing most of the review work prior to meetings and just giving board meeting minutes, for example, in the second eye before we go live. So unless someone really wants this position, um, Jeanette is on leave right now. Chris is kind of covering in her stay when she returns. Uh, if she's, if she's able to continue this formally, makes a lot of sense in my mind, given that she's doing the work. Uh, and so I would propose that. But if others are really eager to, to take this position on, um, I'm sure she would oblige. Beyond that, for the Executive Committee, um, and this committee hasn't had much action because we haven't had executive sessions outside of board meetings. We've been very consistent with the board meetings and with quorum. So there hasn't been a need to bring forth a special executive committee for something that has to be brought to vote and approval. But in any case, the practice has been that we have all board members on that committee just to um, have the most amount of members possible in the event of needing um, a, 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 a time sensitive um, discussion uh, and uh, uh, an approval item to vote on. In addition to that, we've got Governance Committee, Student Learning Committee, Audit and Financing and, and Development Committee. And so you can take a look at that. On the Governance Committee, we've got Jeanette and Jim and Marion and Lenny. Um, that was the team this year. And so the proposal is to keep that team steady. Student Learning Committee-wise, we've got Jeanette, Misha, Ram and Jumiana, which has been um, the team over the course of the past several months. Um, high-powered team would love to keep that consistent if folks are okay with that. Audit and Finance, Jim, Marion and Sal. Um, and so the only change there, which is really not a change, is that Jeanette has historically been on this committee, um, but she's on a number of committees here. And so we talked about having her off one of the committees and this is the one that um, I think makes the most sense. And so um, I'll revisit this with her when she returns. Um, but there'd be three members of the board on that committee. And then finally with development, uh, we've got two members right now, Ram and Sal. Um, wouldn't like to add to this committee. Um, either from someone currently on the board. Um, just to round things out for three, I think a team of three makes a lot of sense, given our other committee sizes. Um, uh, and maybe go beyond that, uh, more than Mary with regard to development. So um, uh, the, the the, the uh, goal here would be to increase this committee size by one, either with someone on the board currently or by over the next couple of months, looking to bring someone on who can um, add expertise um, and, and efforts to uh, to this committee's main goals and purpose. Any immediate takers here? Yeah, Misha? Misha secretly, Ram was hoping you'd raise your hand and now Sal's raising his hand too. That would be fun. You will add to the mix here. I'm excited.
I mentioned you uh, at a meeting to Josh, Misha, so.
That would be awesome. Cool.
Yeah, I, I think there's some work that we can do around the storytelling piece and what it looks like to have our students and families be our best ambassadors.
Yeah.
Um, it's similar work that I'm thinking about with how we leverage like student events as a form of recruiting, recruitment and marketing. So uh, happy to support it in this way.
That's awesome. Um, excited by that. Thank you. Uh, and, and Chris note uh, that Misha should be, should be on that calendar invite too. All right, cool. So these are the committees. This seems good. This is great. Um, a- and going back to what you said um, and have mentioned before, Misha, around storytelling. I mean, I think that was pretty clear with, with Trudy. You know, like you, you hear her talk about her experience at the school and there's like a, there's a buzz. So um, I think um, leveraging that more and advancing it um, uh, really uh, bodes well for school. So um, we've got a sense now of committees and I, I, I think there are perhaps two areas of focus that I'd put forward to the board um, in um uh, expanding things out. And so I think in Trudy's um, transition, I'd love to have uh, the continued perspective of a family member or a family of a current student or of, or of an alum um, on the board. I've got one person in mind for that. He'd be terrific, brings a lot of energy to anything and everything he does. Um, and has been really active when his daughter um, was at our, our middle school um, a, a few years ago. But we kept in touch and he'd be great. So I want to bring him um to the board and introduce him to uh, to folks um, in the coming month or two. And then in addition to that, I think, um, yeah, I think adding to our development committee um, beyond uh, the team and stronger team that we now have. Um, I think bodes well for school too. So I think those are a couple of areas of focus in my mind. Do folks agree, disagree? With that outlook? Cool. So I think with that, let's go back to the agenda for today. Um, we've talked about committees, we've talked about everything. The only two things we should talk about is Marion and minutes. Um, and so we'll have Jim do that in a moment. I'm gonna just quickly pause right now and Pastor Marion.
Josh, I just realized property casualty insurance. Is that on this list?
Oh, it is not. Um, I was remember, why don't you, why don't you, why don't you go ahead? I think you can start that out. Marion will round things out if she's got tidbits that uh, she feels should be should be added. But you go ahead. You've done that over there for a number of years. You're ready.
Yeah, for sure. Quick overview. Um, so our property casualty insurance brokers at Epic, um, we have a great relationship with them. They're very responsive, so I definitely want to continue working with them. They were asking for an approximately seven percent increase in full for all of our property casualty insurance lines. Uh, but the brunt of these increases are actually tied to the F O N B budget lines. Kristen, what was the amount? Do you remember?
Yeah, so for Unity, it's a one point six seven percent increase and for F O N B, a seventeen point five three percent increase.
Thank you. Which, given the world of insurance, we were very happy with these single-digit renewals. Uh, so I, I didn't have any concerns. And Marion looked it over with a more fine-toothed comb and we were happy. And we just, so just each renew at this point.
Cool. So I think with that, um we can move into public comment. We'll give a minute or two for the public to share a word. Um, and I think in that time, we'll probably be ready to uh, to vote. Cool. So we're, we're, uh, kind of moving on from public comment. We'll take a, we're just re- taking a quick recess until we have quorum, which we should have momentarily. So sit tight, multitask, do your thing, team. Sorry about that.
Hey, Josh, my, uh, internet here is horrible. Would you mind if I just, you take my vote right now in case I drop again?
Um.
And then when Marion gets on, she can raise her hand.
I, 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 um, I think we can.
So let me turn the video. Did I, did the video work?
Oh, yeah, the video, you're, you're on right now. I can see you're good.
Okay, I'm, I'm good for everything. My hands up. You see it? Cause I, I was feeling I may drop in two seconds again. So just in case, that's it.
Chris, as we recess, um, can you perhaps take us offline and we'll resume? When, is that okay?
Yeah, no problem. Um.